Four. Of 2020, the member should identify their physical location by stating the county, city, township, or village in the state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely from. So, um, I am in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Bruce Cantor, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Ian Ferguson, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Salim Siddiqui, Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Great, so then let's just, uh, jump in here. We have a full schedule, so I'm praying everybody is all ready and together with, uh, knowing everything inside out on this, um, on the whole packet.
All three hundred and sixty-five pages.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Uh, first up is applications for the vacated city council seat. And that is due to the resignation of city council member Donna Stallings, which I received on May, no, that was June. I mean, yeah, well, whatever, it was effective May thirty-first. Um, and then the section five point seven of the city charter provides that the vacancy shall be filled within sixty days by a majority vote of the remaining members of the council, with the appointee holding office until the Monday following the election. At the election, the vacancy will be filled for the remainder of the unexpired term, which would be November twenty twenty-three is when it would expire. If not filled in sixty days, the vacancy for the unexpired term shall be filled at a special election, which I don't think that that is, uh, a big, I think we'll be fine. So, so far, we have received seven applications. They were due both with a resume and an application by Thursday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at four P M. Um, and the people are, please, uh, help me, Mr. App, the first name?
Avraham.
Avraham, thank you. Vicky Brockman-Haw, Jalen Jennings, Mike Keenan, Dawn Medley, Michael Poole, Peter Stefan. After the application deadline, we did get a submission by, from Maria Manarino Thompson, um, and Greg Ruvalo, um, so, uh, the next election, so this person will be serving from whenever we make the appointment until the next election, which will be held on Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. And then, um, that outcome from that election would determine who gets to, uh, have the, uh, position until the end of the, uh, unexpired term, until November twenty twenty-three. So, I went through mine, and I picked out my, um, you know, top three, and I'm gonna give you my reasonings of how I picked people out. Um, and I will make a suggestion also of who I would like to appoint, so we can move this situation, um, or this item forward. Um, we had some very strong candidates. The people that stood out to me the most were the ones that were the most involved in, um, Lathrow Village. And when I say involved, I mean also volunteering to be on, um, committees and helping us move, um, I almost said the wrong word, and helping us move our, um, our, our, um, city forward. So, um, the three people that I was thinking of was, uh, well, I don't have to say the three people. The person that I would like to appoint, and I'm hoping that you all are on the same page as me, is Dawn Medley. And the reason why, um, I would like to appoint her is because she did some really good, strong work when it came to the, um, marijuana, um, committee. I've heard nothing but good things, um, about her. I've actually, um, also got to talk with her and see just how much she loves this community as everybody else. But I just thought that, um, that would be my suggestion of who I think should be appointed.
Yeah, I, I, I would second that. I, I, I think that, you know, after going through everybody's resumes, I think we had seven fantastic candidates. We really did. There were all highly qualified, and I would have no problem with any of them filling the seat. But I, I think when reviewing the resumes, the one resume that, that really stood out head and shoulders above everybody else was, was Dawn. Um, you know, she manages a three hundred and fifty million dollar budget, um, in her current position. She regularly works with, with, uh, a dozen unions. Uh, she regularly, you know, works with both state, local, uh, and, and federal governments, so she's used to working in government. And as Kelly said, uh, um, you know, she did a, a, an excellent job with the, uh, committee that, that, that she was on. So I, I would have no problem seconding that.
Yeah, so I looked at all the resumes, and, um, I narrowed mine down to two, uh, individuals. And, uh, as Mara stated, um, it had a lot to do with the activities of these individuals, um, and both of which, uh, put in some tremendous effort in these committees. One was the infrastructure committee, and the other one was the medical marijuana committee. So it was, uh, Mike Keenan and Dawn Medley. And so, uh, I was comparing the, the amount of work that was done, um, on both committees. You know, I, um, looked at, uh, the YouTube videos for the infrastructure committee, because I wasn't able to attend just based on my council position. But I followed that, uh, significantly, and, uh, there was a great deal of effort going on, on the infrastructure committee. So on the other side, uh, I was a part of the marijuana committee along with, uh, Councilman Siddiqui, and, uh, uh, we, we had a lot of heavy lifting to do. Um, and, and Dawn really contributed to that committee, uh, as well as, uh, gave serious input, uh, in order for us to make sound decisions. And, uh, quite frankly, um, just looking at the weight of, uh, the two committees and what effort was, was taken within the two committees. And, uh, after reviewing everything on both resumes, uh, Dawn's re- resume, uh, seems to fit, um, city activities as well as grants. And on the other hand, Mike's, uh, effort on the infrastructure com- committee was very tremendous. And, uh, just based on that, I'll have to select Mike Keenan, just based on the information that I reviewed.
So, so let me go then. Um, so yeah, I agree, we had a lot of great candidates, um, and they're all, they're all really good. Um, and I narrowed it down to two as well, which, same as Ian's, which was Dawn and Mike. Um, and my selection would be Mike Keenan. And I'm gonna say that because I think he did a ton of, a lot of great work on the infrastructure committee, and he was part of it for a long period of time. Um, and they had a lot of work to do, you know, both on the first phase and the second phase. And I think he was a really good contributor on that committee. He's done other work with the city. He's, to me, I see him as a calm, reasonable voice, um, and he's shown that on various Facebook issues and postings that have come up. Um, he's not one that's gonna fly off the handle and, and go crazy with things. He's one that's, is gonna offer a reasonable perspective and yet voices opinion. And I think that'd be good to have on the council. I, I agree, Dawn is great too. I worked with her on the marijuana committee, and she did a, a ton of good work, um, helping get that thing through to the point where we made a recommendation. Um, but, you know, I, I know that Mike's work, um, also requires him to manage multiple projects constantly, um, and he's got, he's at a pretty high level within his department. He's, I know he's been a board, not board, but, uh, yeah, maybe a board member on other school-related, uh, committees and groups, um, and has done a great job with those two. So my recommendation would be to for Mike. So I guess we have a tie.
Yeah, and I think that, um, honestly, that our board needs to reflect what our city looks like. And, you know, what it is, is that, um, then I would be the only female on this board. Also, I'm just giving you diversity-wise and how demographics are. So, um, I think that, I mean, I, I don't pray back from that. I think I've said that before, and that reflection of our demographics of the city.
Yeah, no question. I mean, uh, it's, that is important. I mean, this, I mean, I was really on the line here. I was just looking at both sides of the amount of effort it took on these committees. And that's the reason why, um, I selected Mike Keenan. Um, and yeah, Salim is, uh, you know, accurate when it comes to, uh, you know, being calm in the face of adversity. We've seen that. Um, but again, like I said, I mean, it was so close. Um, it, it's just, right now, you're right, it's, you know, we have to weigh both sides. And I just, I think we need to just maybe have, how long do we have to discuss this?
I'm gonna wrap it up in a moment, because, um, I know that I'm, I'm, I like, uh, Mike too. I don't, I have more things that I'm thinking that I don't wanna, um, say, but, um, I'm gonna wrap it up. And the fact is, this could stay open for sixty days. It slows our business down. Um, everything that we've been working towards, um, will be pretty much coming to a screeching halt until we, um, or not all of it, but until we can figure this out. So if anybody has any last things to say, we can just, um, move on to the next thing on the agenda.
Well, the only thing that I'll say, last thing, uh, to your comment, Kelly, yeah, it's important to have the city reflect, the board, the council reflect what the city is. It is, you know, obviously, I, or of course, I'm all for equality and, and gender inclusion, all that stuff, but I think we want, in this case, we wanna have the best person on the council. To me, that's Mike Keenan. So, and I know that Mike, I don't think he wants to run in September or in November. Um, but I think for a five, six-month period, whatever it is, he'd be a valuable person to have on the council.
Yeah, the, uh, the, I, I, you guys know I love Mike too, and Mike was, you know, one of my finalists as well. Um, but on, on the flip side of that, uh, Salim, um, is I think Dawn might be interested in my discussions with her of possibly running. Um, in fact, one of the reasons why she wanted to get on, from my discussion with her, one of the reasons she wanted to get on the planning commission was to kinda use that to get some experience and then to, to run for council. Um, so, you know, one of the other things that I see this as, is, as, uh, would also be a good way for her to kinda cut her teeth and see if, you know, this is something that, 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 uh, um, you know, that, that she does wanna do. She'd get a couple months before she'd have to get her application, and, and, uh, so that, that, that could be, you know, a, a, a positive as well. So, um, you know, I'm comfortable with, with both candidates, but, but I do have to say, you know, um, I, I, I think Dawn, um, you just, looking at the resume, just stands out of, as I said earlier, stands out above, above everybody else, so.
And honestly, I think Dawn is a neutral party also, and, uh, Mike Keenan was my, um, second person too. Um, and, and then I'll be done with it, but I just wanna say, and I'm, I'm trying to let that sink in, that I think that he's in, that she is a neutral party, um, and that it won't, it won't be perceived as we're, you know, doing anything that's not above board. And I, I'm just letting that marinate for a second, so. Any final?
Sorry, sorry, I had, I was on mute, sorry about that. Um, so, uh, once we close this out today, or should I say, move on to the next agenda item, what, when's the next point of discussion?
I guess in July, at, at our next, um...
Twelfth.
The twelfth. So we cannot revisit this either in study session or council meeting?
We can always revisit it, but the appointment would be, unless we did a, a special meeting, and I know that for mine, July, I think, um, Cheryl, didn't we come up with a date, the one date that we were supposed, something else?
You're, you're on mute, Cheryl.
There was a date in July, I thought it wasn't the twelfth, but I thought there was a date that you might want to consider, whether you want to just meet again or invite your top, um, candidates here for, um, an interview of some sort?
And the twelfth would be our, that would be a study session, that, our next actual, being able to do any type of movement would not be until the end of July, July twenty-sixth.
Unless we turn July twelfth into a special meeting.
Right.
Looking at my calendar right now, can you hear me? Yep, okay. Just looking at my calendar here. One second. So special meeting July twelfth, you said?
I said we could possibly.
Possibly.
That's the regular study session date.
Okay, and that would be to discuss further the narrowed candidate.
It's a possibility at that time, yes.
Okay.
Okay, next one is a, um, city administrator evaluation and contract consideration request.
Thank you. If you recall, it was time for my annual evaluation. And as a result of that, um, we often have some conversation in regards to the, um, the terms of my contract as well as compensation. So the memo before you summarizes my request, and it includes the two percent increase that is standard for all officers and employees, also asking for the bonus that was, um, equal to what the officers receive relative to hazard pay and the two fifty that all employees received, as well as contractors, um, allowing for the ten unused, um, vacation days to be, um, paid out and the balance rolled over. And then the negotiation in regards to the severance period and changing it from the, um, ninety days without cause to six months this year and nine months next year. So it's like an escalation based on seniority. And then severance after an election from six months to nine months this year, and then in a year, one year. So I didn't know if there were any questions, and it's on your regular agenda for action, should you?
Does anyone have any questions?
I had one question, and I guess it's probably a Scott Baker question, um, that I thought of. I mean, I've seen this, this document several times, I kind of, kind of struck me, um, last night when I was looking at it again. Um, Scott, I mean, I guess the, you know, the, for, when we talk about severance after an election, so, you know, if there was a, a different council elected and they decided they wanted to go a different direction and, and, and they were to get rid of the, the city administrator, isn't that essentially severance without cause?
Yeah, that, that would fall under that category. I think, and what we've done, the reason why we split them out, uh, for Cheryl's contract was, uh, you know, they are essentially the same thing, but we did create it the different because, because of the possibility that if there is a different council, and they may, with or without cause, choose to go a different direction. It just added, added insurance for her and her position.
Right, no, I understand that. I just, I just was thinking, you know, legally, I mean, you know, if the, if the severance with, with, without cause is longer, well, yeah, okay, I, I got it, yeah, that's fine. So, and then I guess the other, the other question is, is, um, do we, are, are we, are we talking about putting the, the twenty twenty-two stipulation in there at this point as well, or would that be done in twenty twenty-two? Or is that a twenty twenty-two request?
My request is that it be an addendum to the contract that reflects both the information applicable to this year as well as next year.
Got it, okay, yeah. It's the only questions I have.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Just wanna verify, so changing the severance period, so we're saying nine months and then one year, like, after election, so that's pretty much, that's in line with other municipalities as described below in that form, right?
Yes, generally, you'll see most of them tend to be around one year, nine months to one year.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, moving on to the next one is gonna be the sidewalk repair program.
Thank you, we, we have city, I'm sorry, we have city engineers, Scott Wrangler here as well, and, um, he issued the bids relative to our three-year sidewalk program. Six bids were received, and the lowest qualifying bidder, Katie Cement, is being recommended to you for the contract. And I don't know if you had any particular questions, or if Scott wanted to add any additional information.
Uh, I don't have a lot of additional information. I did get, uh, three references, and they all checked out really well, so I was pleased with that, uh, being that I've never heard of this contractor, but all three of them had really good things to say about them, so that's positive. Um, Scott, uh, Wrangler, I, one, one question for you. Um, so I was, I was curious as, as how they put together, and I, and I'm guessing this was probably a standard thing out for, for all of the, um, respondents to the RFP, but I was curious how they put together a bid for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, 'cause we don't know the, uh, number of flags that will be, need to be repaired, 'cause I don't think we've assessed those areas yet. So, um, can you talk a little bit about how they came up with that estimate?
Nothing more than rough numbers, looking at, you know, this year's program compared to the size of the next two years. By taking into consideration that the majority of ADA ramps will be done, all of them will be done along Southfield Corridor, uh, south of Eleven Mile, north Eleven Mile, we're only gonna replace the ramps that are broken, because the road commission's coming through in, I forget the year, twenty-three or twenty-four, and we're gonna let them deal with the rest of them.
Okay.
So it was nothing more than, than a estimated guess on that, just to get a reasonable quantity so they could put a, a unit price to it.
Right, and so, and so basically, really what we're doing is we're, we're contracting with them for twenty twenty-one, and, you know, we have estimates for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, and if we were to decide to go with them the following year, then we would work on, uh, you know, a more, uh, accurate price for that particular year, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the goal would be to come back to council in February and ask for an extension as long as they, you know, perform satisfactorily.
Yeah.
Uh, if not, then the city can go back out to bid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, moving on to, sorry, uh, that's the sidewalk program, sidewalk program.
Lots of sidewalk program.
Audit team services bid and award of contract?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Um, at council's request, we did issue an RFP for our professional auditing services, and we received, I think it was ten responses, and we formed the audit committee, not commission committee, um, that consisted of myself, council members, I'm Ian Ferguson, and council member Salim Siddiqui, and treasurer, city adminis- assistant city administrator Pam Prachi. And, um, after we did the evaluations, we all, um, had the top candidate being Plant Moran. A copy of that packet hopefully is in the link, sometimes those links don't work after the PDF is created. And it was actually a reduction in the rate that they currently charge us. So that would be starting at, um, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred, inclusive of the single audit of six thousand, which we're anticipating we will be required to have. And that will be on your regular council agenda for your consideration. Any questions?
No question, I would just comment, I wanna comment that, uh, Cheryl and Pam did a great job putting the, the RFP together and getting all the bids and organizing it so Ian and I could also help analyze and review, and I think it was a really good process. We end up with the same, the same place, I think, recommending Plant Moran, but I feel a lot better about it based on all the responses we got and the, um, you know, information we reviewed on all of the, uh, candidates. So I think it was a real good process.
Yeah, I agree, thanks Pam, thanks, uh, Cheryl, really appreciate that. Um, I felt really good about it, uh, not just from a process perspective, but just right sizing the number, the overall number. Um, I think we're in a, a better place, to be honest, and we know who we're dealing with. Uh, my goal was never to, um, make any change that was unreasonable. And so I wanted to go through the process to make sure that we actually had the right, uh, auditing, uh, firm in place. So we did that, and I really appreciate, uh, everyone allowing me to vet that process.
Anyone else that wants to speak on this?
I just have to give Cheryl the kudos for the RFP, 'cause she did the work on that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah, it looks good.
So next up, we have, well, I had it already teed up, about the interlocking, uh, agreement with Oakland County for the election, uh, services. I think that was the right thing, yeah, Oakland County inter, interlocal, not locking, not the camp, uh, agreement for, uh, election services.
And the proposal is basically to see if we can interlock and work with the Oakland County, um, clerk elections office, specifically relative to the absentee voter county board. As you know, it's becoming more and more, um, challenging, especially as there are more participants in it, as well as just having a centralized streamlined process with the high-speed tabulators. Um, they have a standard, um, contract agreement relative to offering those services, and a number of our surrounding, um, neighboring communities already participate, including Berkeley. So I thought we should take a look at that. I wasn't asking you to vote on it today, I just wanted to get some consensus that, um, you're at least open to having those discussions with Oakland County on what services they could provide.
So I do have a, a question on that one, I see that is, um, it was saying to support and solidate the administration and management of the absentee voter county boards. So does that mean that would, I mean, our absentee, our county boards would still be on-site? They would just provide people? Or would they provide high-speed equipment that they would be bringing here? Or what is, what is that really?
That's the part that I'm not absolutely certain of. The one that I have seen, um, was relative to Royal Township, and they conducted that at Oakland County. So I've noticed that their rates include, um, room, like, room rentals. Um, so I, that's part of the issue that I would like to get some clarification on, if it's on-site or if it's at Oakland County, and if there's a difference in the cost for that.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions?
No, you asked my question.
Okay. Uh, moving on to proposed charter amendment ballot language.
I probably will let Scott take this one. Um, the more we tried working on what that proposed ballot language would look like, the more baffled we became. So we thought we could start with just explaining to you, um, which is in the memo, what the current process is, and then we could figure out where it is you'd like to go with our, uh, um, our language and our charter.
Cheryl's correct, the, the more we started jumping into this, um, it, it became more difficult, because you start changing, you know, if, if you just want, the direction that we received last time was that we wanted to be able to defer some or all of the city portion, uh, primarily, uh, special assessments from the, the July first summer tax bill to the December tax bill. Problem with that is, uh, shifting that really just takes that, that large bill and puts it into the winter tax bill. Um, I don't know how much relief that would provide. And then there's also an issue with, uh, dates and, and valuation or, or review, et cetera, things like that, leading up to that. So one of the options that we thought about, uh, one of the options that we came up with that might provide some relief was to extend the payment deadline. But that comes, uh, that also comes with some negative impacts, while, while it does benefit the residents, potentially benefit the residents if they wanted to take advantage of that. It, it, the city does get to keep that, that late, that penalty interest, that, um, that money. And I, Pam, correctly or wrong, I think you said it's about fifty thousand dollars, thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year that the city collects in, in penalty interest, uh, on these, on these tax bills. So if we were to extend the period of time with which people had to pay or reduce the amount of penalty interest that would be added, it would give people a longer opportunity to, uh, maybe to budget or to balance or to spread out that payment. But again, it would come at some cost to the city. The other concern that we had with just moving back the payment date dealt with cash flow coming into the city. I think it was, would you say, Pam, sixty-five percent of the people, residents of the city, the properties, their taxes are paid by their bank, and the banks wait until the last possible day to make those payments. and the banks wait until the last possible day to make those payments. So if we push that back, that's just a longer period of time that the city has, uh, before that cash flow comes in. So wanted to get some more feedback and, and find out if we could, if we could provide some relief, the best way to do that while minimizing the impact on the city and, and the finances and, and making Pam's life easier.
Thanks Scott, yeah, I, I was actually laughing at the beginning, because you said it got a little more complicated. I just look at this and say, wow, this one got away from me. Um, because I, I, this was originally my, my, uh, suggestion, and it was just based upon, you know, comments from the infrastructure committee over the last couple of years, you know, when we did the millage. You know, there were a lot of people who, you know, asked, well, you know, can we, can we put the road millage in in the, um, you know, in the winter, so it's not adding, you know, uh, considerably more, you know, money, uh, you know, to our already, you know, expensive summer taxes, you know, so help us spread out the, the, the payment. So all, all I was really getting at, you know, in this, you know, when I suggested this was, you know, did it make sense to have a charter amendment that would allow us to place future millages, you know, uh, in the winter, so that it could be spread out a little bit, and then it kind of got into all this, this, this other stuff, so I, I don't know. You know, I, I agree, it does, it did get very, very complicated, and I, I don't even know that I one hundred percent fully understand it, but I guess my, my question is, is, is that, can we just do a one eighty, is it possible to do a one eighty and just go back to the original suggestion, which, which was, you know, to allow, um, you know, the possibility of, of future millages to be assessed during the winter tax period instead of, uh, the summer?
Problem is, we, we don't have, our charter doesn't differentiate between millages or general city tax obligations. So we would be, in essence, creating a new charter provision, um, that would allow for that, and, and trying to fit that in, that, that was part of the problem, and tracking that was, was going to create some accounting headaches, nightmares for, for Pam. So I, like I said, I, I think if, in my opinion, the, the easiest way, I guess, to, to provide residents with some financial relief would be to extend that deadline or reduce that, you know, maybe make the, you know, initially, it's four percent gets added to the unpaid portion of the tech, of the balance on September 1. And, you know, perhaps if you made that one percent, and then instead of adding an additional half percent each additional month, that maybe then you would just add one percent or two percent further it goes on. I think we could structure it like that. And again, I, I don't know how many people would utilize that. You know, I, I mentioned it already, but we, we didn't really want to change the payment date, because then while we could change the payment date for the city tax, we can't change the payment date for the state education, the zoo authority, the college, uh, the public schools, all of that, that are due by, or honor before September 1st, uh, we can only affect the city one, so then that, you know, if someone makes a payment of their tax bill, they're making a partial payment, which people do make partial payments quite frequently, Pam indicated. How do you account for, well, where did that hundred dollars go? Was that hundred dollars towards city, or was that supposed to go towards the school? Who's getting paid? Who is now collecting interest? So it, it, from a practical application, it becomes much more difficult to, to achieve the, the desired outcome doing it that way.
Yeah, so I, I was just trying to find, you know, do, do something simple that would, you know, make things a little bit easier, but, you know, if it's gonna, you know, if it's gonna create a, 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 a big ripple effect that, that doesn't really, you know, benefit, you know, uh, a majority of our residents, you know, then, uh, or a lot of our residents, I should say, then, yeah, I would, I would just, personally, I would just think, let's just drop it.
I agree with that. I think it's getting too complicated and not providing enough of a benefit to, to kind of justify the extra confusion that's going to happen.
The one thing I do say is that I do allow partial payments, and we do have a lot of people that will make payments in July and August. And then they're only penalized in September on the outstanding balance, not the whole amount. So if they make payments and they can't come up with the full amount, but what I have found in the past is people have waited because they can't pay their taxes, so they wait till like July or December to pay them, and then they get all that penalty on there. Now they've learned that if they make payments, like divided by five, they're making the payments and they're smaller than what they would if they waited until December to make full payment. When they got their bonuses and things like that, so that's what I have found.
Pam, they have until February to make the payments before it goes over to the county?
February fourteenth is when they're, um, when the winter taxes are due, February fourteenth, after that, then the winter taxes are penalized from the fifteenth to the end of the month. March first, everything's turned over to the county, I have no control once it gets to the county level, and it has to go on March first to the county.
So for now, I, as I understand it, we're not moving any forward language relative to this.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
Yep.
We're good?
I'm good.
Okay, um, I guess other agenda items, which I don't really see any other agenda items unless there's something else that we were supposed to put something on here, I can't remember what it was.
Uh, the other, um, ballot language proposal was relative to the dates for the budget and moving it from an introduction in May to an introduction in June, wait.
Introduction in April, move to May, and then a, a vote to approve it from May to June.
That, that one was a lot more straightforward.
Yeah, that one was easy. That would take about twenty minutes, but the other one, we, we went back and forth for a while, so.
And that one's on your, um, council agenda for your consideration.
Okay. So, um, going in the mayor and council comments, um, we had quite a few comments that were sent in, which I'm going to read these, um, also during the, the actual meeting, so they're read both. You know, in, into, um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read too much at once, too many screens. So, um, the first one was, um, I received an email for support of Peter Stefan for Donna Stalling's open seat. And, um, it was because he is a long-term, long-time resident of Lathir Village with a keen interest in its well-being. The other ones, which I now cannot find. Just one moment. There was, maybe I'm overlooking it, it was a oh.
There were a couple of public comments about the alleyway vacation.
Yep, so here's another one, which is, and I can't believe I left my glasses in the car, but this one is from Bob Tamrelli, Tamorelli, sorry. Um, I live at eighteen four eight five Delores Avenue, Lathir Village. I like to comment on the proposed vacation of the alley between eighteen one two nine Sunnybrook and two seven zero four seven five one South Hill Road business addresses. I would recommend, I would recommend a no vote, the city should not be in the business of providing land grants, alleyways are provided to ease main street traffic, provide service and alternate access to establishments on the main road for the benefit of the public. This alley currently provides that function. The petitioner's request, which seems heavy with personal appeals, including his general maintenance activities, should be applauded as good civic actions, but does not deem worthy of the city gifting him the product, the property, which as the claimant himself states, raises the value of the property. If the city property, which has been abused by neglect of the appropriate code practices as stated, the city should seek action against the owners of the property to uphold the code of the city, the codes of the city. The pre- the petitioner understands that this, as he states, while a five to six feet high masonry screen wall buffer is required by ordinance, it does not currently exist. The petitioner, as an informed council member and citizen of the Lathir, of Lathir Village, should seek relief via existing code violation relief, not by petitioning for gifting of property. Lastly, the petitioner at one point states, the city has no existing or future uses planned for this alley, yet later on indicated, indicates a future South Hill Road project would provide additional value to the owners of the building with regards to buyout of their property from that future project. Therefore, it seems there is indeed some future use for the property, in fact, real value in this alley for whomever owns the property. If for some reason the city deems the alley in its entirety or split as a press petitioner is requesting is of no longer use to the city, the city should in fact offer to sell the property via public auction to the highest bidder. Um, the next one was something that was sent in from public comment. The first one was submitted on Friday from Roger Lynn. Questions concerning request to vacate public alleyway at eighteen one two nine Sunnybrook. Number one, with Bruce Cantor currently on city council, isn't this considered a conflict of interest? Number two, will other homes on alleyways within LV also be allowed the same right as what is being requested by Bruce? Three, if trash is a concern, why isn't Rami, and Rami, I'm sorry, I'm not going to destroy your last name, Sweden? Hopefully I'm close, code enforcement officer not giving citations to commercial property owners. Four, if the city agrees to Bruce's request, there is no mention in the notice of public hearing what the selling price is for the segment of land, please advise selling price, thank you. The next one for public comment is from Barb Kinnies, Kines, received on Saturday, six nineteen. It is time to meet in person, there are too many important issues facing our city, and not enough people participating in the process. Watching people eat and drink while discussing important city businesses unprofessional. And I read that one, I think I got them all.
It was all of them. Yeah, I'll, Kelly, I'll, I'll address the alleyway vacation in the council meeting.
Well, before you do that, because technically, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Scott, you, not necessarily to be, um, addressed for all of them, or? I just
Yeah, that, that's correct, I mean, a, a public comment doesn't require a response necessarily.
Right.
Um, if, if there are some issues that are brought up that are either factually inaccurate, which there were in those comments, uh, we could address those specifically with respect to the, the city charging for an alley vacation. I, I went back and looked, um, I did provide to Cheryl from, from our records, my office, the last twenty years, all the, all the street and alley vacations that have been done, and the city has never charged any of those individuals that have, have made that application to the city. So it, it is a right that, that anyone adjacent to public property has, they can make a request, obviously requires a demonstration uh, that it's appropriate, but, uh, that there is no fee, there is no sale involved in that land, because, um, as I indicated, it's not, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, you know, what, what these are, these streets, these alleys, I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't post them at an auction for sale, I mean, nobody could build on them, you could, uh, they're essentially landlocked, most of them are landlocked parcels or, or un- undeveloped or underutilized, uh, areas of the city that, um, are more appropriate to be, to be due back to the adjacent parcels, so, so that, that's just, you know, we can address those comments if, if there are more comments or during the, uh, the regular meeting, we can make those, uh, statements.
Yeah, Kelly, Kelly, what, what I meant was, I, I wasn't going to address them now, I was saying, I, when I, when I do my presentation, I'll address some of those points.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking that you, for that, um, probably should just completely recuse yourself from even
Of course, of course I'll recuse myself, but as the applicant, I'm also going to say why I want to do it.
Got you, okay, so I'm just
Totally recuse myself from, from both matters that are under discussion tonight.
Okay, so I just wanted to say also, I did drive over there today, and, um, I did take pictures of it, um, because it's not used for a, um, access to the main road, or, or, you know, and if I'm not mistaken, I think you get a ticket if you use the alleyway to get to the main road, so that's not something that the alleys are, are there for. Plus, when I went and looked at the, um, alley, and, and I do have a picture that we can, you know, submit to it, is that it does not exit out to eleven mile, it actually has, um, both a brick wall, it looks like, and also a dumpster, a curb, a bush.
And, and a building.
Yeah, no way.
Building, straight back.
Yeah, so, and yeah, you know, during, absolute, during the, um, the actual, that's, uh, oh, it's that student council, oh my God. The, uh, the council meeting, yes, um, as the applicant, yes.
Yeah, Kelly, you, you, you know me, I, 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 you, I, I leave no stone unturned, so it'll be a very thorough, uh, discussion.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we had our I's dotted and our T's crossed. Um, regarding the, um, so I'm looking in the chat, it says, is there a point to address the bike path sign, the signage? We did not have any comments, um, put into place about the signage. I know that there have been some residents that have been very upset about it, which, um, I asked them to come to the meeting to express what their, you know, their concerns were, and I don't have anything to speak on, speak upon. Uh, Peter, if you are Pete, excuse me, if you would like to, um, say something, please let us know. Um, but also in the other one, to address us coming back into the office, um.
Yeah, I'd like to address that also.
Are, we are going to be doing Zoom or hybrid of this until September, um, I believe it was until September that we agreed on last time. And so, because, um, one, I believe you have to be fully vaccinated to be, um, in the, um, the, the building, or you have to wear a mask, but I know that we also have, um, council members and, and member of staff that have young children that could not get vaccinated, and some of us also have, um, people in their household that, um, have, um, mu- uh, compromised immune system, so while we still have an opportunity to stay safe and keep everybody else safe, this is what we're going to continue to do. And actually, um, and I was thinking about this, because that's one reason I did come up here, because I said there's nobody really here, and it's conducive to, uh, working, but, um, I was also thinking that in the going on, um, eleven years that I've been on council, I would say there are more, is more participation now through Zoom than I've ever seen, I mean, we've sat in, in this, uh, the council chambers utterly alone, and then, um, not have opportunity, the, the residents don't have opportunity to interact with us, because if you're not here, you couldn't interact with us. So, um, to, to kind of let you know, um, there's no nefarious, uh, situations going on behind the scenes, I think that this is much more uh, transparent, more than anything, you can call in through Zoom. If you don't have the internet, you can call in, there is a phone number that is posted in, um, the, uh, both agendas, the study session and the meeting, you can also, um, you know, connect, go through Zoom. Um, and then we are working on a way where we would do a, um, feed to go to one of the monitors, um, that's either, um, that's in the, uh, meeting place. So I hope I answered that question, I also see that we have somebody's hand is raised.
Kelly?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Bruce?
Well, let, let Ian go, and then I, I, before we go to public comment, I, I still have a bunch of questions on some of the things that are up for action today, so I was hoping to get to them before we get to public comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Let Ian go, go.
Yeah, just quickly, uh, so yeah, uh, as, as Mayor Garrett stated, yeah, we have some, some of us that have young children that haven't been vaccinated yet, and we're working on that. The other part of it is, we have, uh, elderly, uh, family members that we're attending to that have pre-existing conditions, and, uh, they're working to, you know, finalize their And they're working to, you know, finalize their vaccine in parallel to that. You know, we're going through a pandemic pandemic. We actually went from zero participation in study sessions to roughly sixty percent over the last year and a half. So you know, Zoom has been very helpful for everyone. We've, we've encouraged people to come up on Zoom and and give information and also participate. And if you even look at the council sessions or the council meetings, we've had higher participation than in person. I mean, on many occasions when we're in our study sessions, when we're actually eating, you can see us eating on camera, but we actually eat a lot in our person to person study sessions. And trust me, that's not professional either. So I think we are one of a handful of cities that have ran effectively through the pandemic and we've been very efficient doing it. So kudos to the staff and the city manager. I welcome any comments from anyone who disagree with me, but I want to stay safe until I can keep my entire family safe.
I have Bruce.
Okay, I'll be, I'll try to be quick here. Start with the the highest priority one. This one's for Scott Baker. I was reading over again, the the, you know, we have the first reading of the general cannabis ordinance and and the last time we spoke as a council, we had talked about the fact that we wanted two licenses, so a maximum of two facilities, but that but that facility could have a medical and a recreational license. I I I read through the license limit section. I it was a little I wasn't a hundred percent certain that I understood it fully, but I wasn't sure that it reflected that those comments. So I did, or what we had asked for last time. So I just wanted to check on that.
Yeah, let me try to pull that up real quick.
On page three twenty seven of the packet, but
disappeared, though. I'm like, Kelly, I got too many screens up. You can go to your next question if if you got it off.
Regardless, I just want to make sure that we get the, you know, when we do the first reading that we're reading the right thing. Regarding the the special assessment announcement for Cambridge. Cheryl, I I counted twelve homes, not eleven. One of the things that we had had talked about, and I think it was in our recommendation and we talked about it in the infrastructure committee was that you know, the assessment would be assessed to anybody who has frontage along that ditch. And so there are twelve, twelve homes. I think maybe we forgot one of the or did include one of the homes that were on the on the corner possibly. But I I had counted twelve. And then the other thing, you know, that and I I can always mention this during the during the council meeting when we get to that portion, but the other, the other thing, I think it's important for those residents to realize is that you know, again, in in the recommendation that we we accepted, we said that if the special assessment is 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 turned down by a street, their street does not get paved because we wouldn't be using you know, city dollars effectively since you lose about ten percent of the life of the street, you know, if the if the water isn't properly removed by the ditch system. So we would be basically throwing, well, again, not to make a pun, throwing money down the drain. So I I want to make that, make that point there as well. And then with the second reading for the sign ordinance, I just want to point out, I mean, I I guess I could make the 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 motion, but it is in there three times. And again, it's the it's the third ordinance is the one that's correct that starts on page one eighty one. The other two are are prior versions before we made some of the larger corrections. And then same thing with the zoning text amendments, that one's in there twice. And we need to make sure that when we do the I think that's the first reading that we we reference the the correct one. I think they may be the same. I'm not a hundred percent certain. I didn't go through it line by line, but and that was all my questions.
Thank you. Was he wants to have anything from council?
Scott, did you find anything?
Yeah, if you, there was public comment, I think if you want to let
Thank you. Pete has a question.
There it is. Sorry, the mute button wasn't there before. So I I'm I'm a resident and I'm one of the residents that's not happy with the signage in my front yard. There's multiple concerns other than how gaudy it is, but the the location of it happens to be almost dead center as I look out my front window. I'm the second house from Lathrop and I believe Golden Gate. And they probably would have put it at the next house, but they have a extended parking area, so they they kind of went down to the following house. And I don't know if they moved it away from the property line because that's where our mailbox is. But it literally between two trees, it splits the uprights as far as being right in the middle of my view and right in the middle of looking at my house as well. So that's, that's my main complaint as far as the visualization of it. The second aspect is that the sign indicates to turn right to head to the park. And then there's no other indication on where to turn where you know, technically, they would need to turn left then again, and then turn right again in order to get to the park. So it it's, it's not an accurate directional sign. And then when you look at the overall safety of the bike path, and I, you know, kind of mentioned this a few times, crossing eleven mile is a I would say extreme safety hazard. I wouldn't cross it myself. I definitely wouldn't cross it with my kids. I know people that don't drive across eleven mile to cut over to six ninety six and head east. So, you know, I I was, I was upset when I came home and I just saw this in my yard and it was just posted. I I didn't see any public notice. Yes, I saw something about a bike path, but I was not alerted or aware, you know, that I was going to have this big sign in my front yard and I wanted to address it.
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of going to throw Suzie or Cheryl under the bus a little bit. So just sorry, I'm not backing up over you two, but was there any type of, did you all have any kind of idea where these signs were going to go or was it strictly the way that the grant was written that they'll put them where they need to go? I mean, help us, you know, like, help us understand where why the signs are put where they were. If you have it.
A lot of that was, I mean, some of that is based on how the grant was written. You know, and the other part of it is how you know, we're best fit in terms of marking what was in the non-motorized transportation plan, which is what the bike route is based upon. The the project engineer for that, you know, has told us that an effort was made to put those signs where to, you know, at the property line, right between two, two different homes, one possible. So definitely efforts were made not to put them in the middle of anyone's property. I can't say for certain whether or not that actually if that happened one hundred percent of the time. But I I trust that we weren't trying to put them in the middle of people's hearts. And I will say, in terms of crossing eleven mile and, you know, just six ninety six in general, and we have had those discussions with the engineer, with our the traffic consultants and even Chief McKee about the safety concerns and we will be rerouting and getting those new signage fabricated right now to make those adjustments to the bike route. So people will be directed to walk, walk their bikes to the Southfield six ninety six intersection and cross where there is where where there are pedestrian signals, sorry. So that you should see those those changes in the next few weeks.
Yeah. Hey, let me just comment on the bike route because I'm a biker. I've been a biker for many years now and I I cycle with a bunch of people now as well as in the past. And typically bikers don't attempt to cross eleven mile where six ninety six is in the height of traffic. Typically, they do it early in the morning, Saturdays, Sundays, even Friday, Friday, late Friday evenings, actually, because that's kind of the the routine. And so even even the Southfield, I think they're called the Striders or something like that, even even that group would never attempt to cross Southfield in eleven mile in the height of traffic. But there are bikers that come through our community in that on that path. And I've seen them do it many times and they don't necessarily live in Lathrop. They actually live in Oak Park and they come this route and they also live in Berkeley and then they take the route through going all the way up to Birmingham. So I I understand why the why the gentleman made that statement and I think there may be some compromises on the on the the signage. Not not just his signage, but also the signage on eleven mile. So I think we should research that.
I I before, I don't want anyone to think that that I don't believe what you just said, Suzie, is to change to move them.
Yeah, we will. Yes, we will be rerouting people to that, to the Southfield and eleven mile intersection.
Actually take the 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 signs up, though. I I'm cautionous saying that because then I'm just wondering if, you know, what would happen of saying that we wouldn't move signs for people. That's why I'm for residents. I'm just
Mayor Garrett, I want to be respectful of your time and it is after seven. There is a related item on the regular council agenda relative to the M that contract relative to permitting for this project in particular. So we can take it up there.
Bruce, ask your question again in the regular meeting and I'll answer it.
And remember that question, Suzie, because I just want to make sure I heard right. We can be, Ian and I both can be very clear. All right. Thank you, guys.